Denise Johnson.
Thank you. Actually, I'm Brenda Bandy. I'm the Executive Director for the Kansas Breastfeeding Coalition. And it is my pleasure on behalf of our organization to present the Gold Level Breastfeeding Employee Support Award to Lawrence USD 497. So we have your certificate embedded in a clock, which I'm going to give to Denise Johnson, who accepts that on behalf of the school district. But I'd like to share with you the significance of this award so that you understand that while this is maybe a small plaque, it represents a large effort on behalf of your school district. You are one of only nine school districts in our entire state to have achieved this award. And while you have over the years done a fantastic job of supporting your breastfeeding employees, it's been a pleasure to work with Denise and with Sarah, with HR, to really fully integrate what you are doing and communicate that to all of your employees. So while it's been based on building by building administration support, now you have a fully integrated policy that is being communicated to employees proactively before they go out on maternity leave. And we know that is really best practice for mothers to understand that your district supports them when they come back. And I do have a couple of other things that are unique about your school district. And that is a communication plan that we developed. And actually, Denise, that was your idea, to say that, you know, we're doing this, but we have a lot of buildings here. And how are we going to communicate this across everyone? So we developed a flow chart of from the moment that the woman announces that she's going to be going out, what do we do? And I can tell you that communication plan, we've been sharing with other districts across our state. And that is very welcome, especially with large districts such as yours, to have a plan, a course of action. So thank you so much for sharing that and helping us to develop that. And also, you have before you, I'll draw your attention to the success story. Your school district is highlighted nationally. That success story is now in a database of success stories with the Centers for Disease Control, the CDC. They are very proud of what you all have done. And they are showcasing your work across the nation with other school districts, as are we in our state. And I'm also happy to add that Denise has been very generous to give of her time. She is going to be presenting on a panel that we are facilitating with the Kansas Association of School Boards. Their conference coming up in December, maybe some of you are going to be attending that. Denise is going to be a part of a panel, along with other school districts, to talk about how your district did this work and how important it has been for your district. So thank you for the tools that you have helped us to kind of co-create and also for sharing your story both in our state and nationally, to really inspire other districts to do this type of work. And I believe that Sarah, from the HR perspective, you have a comment to share about how this is actually working?
Just real quick, one of the things that organizing this did was it allows me as the representative in HR who meets with employees who are going out on leave, to be able to bring it to their intention before they leave for maternity leave so that they know that they're supported before they even come back and need the resources that we've put in place. So.
Thank you, Sarah, for sharing that. So mothers are usually very relieved to hear that you're acting proactively. And they don't have to ask. It can be a somewhat difficult conversation to have if you're not sure how your supervisor might respond. So it's really nice to hear that. And I would be really remiss to not highlight Carrie Allen's work with the Lawrence Douglas County Health Department. The Health Department has really been a partner in this work all along and really helping to bring the local breastfeeding support. We know your district is doing a great job, but sometimes mothers need additional support to be successful. And Carrie has really helped to integrate that. And those resources are being provided to mothers through the HR department and through Denise's wellness program. So mothers know if they're having a bit of a problem, who to call for help. So this is, like I said, a very comprehensive program that you all have come up with. And I really congratulate you. And you should be proud of being the ninth district to get this Gold Level Award. So congratulations.
I just want to, I do want to say one thing. This started about a year and a half ago when I had a staff member come up to me and ask, I'm a new mom and I don't know how to figure out where I go for breastfeeding. And since you're the wellness person, can you help me with that? So honestly, from that request, this team was built. So I'm very proud to be a part of this. Carrie's work through the Health Department really helped to guide where we were going. And then reached out to Brenda to help with this because there was a grant provided for us to be able to make this happen. And then, of course, we wouldn't be here without Sarah and talking to each one of our new moms. So I just wanted to share that. That's kind of where the story came from. So thank you for your time.
Thank you all. Appreciate all of your work on this issue. So I have a very short report. I just wanted to thank everybody who attended the listening session at Billy Mills Middle School and at the Lawrence Public Library. I think we had really good conversations at both of those locations. We also tomorrow will be at the City Commission meeting to support the Tobacco 21 Initiative that we heard about a couple of weeks ago. And so I'll be there making a statement on behalf of the board, but certainly if anybody else from the board wants to come and be at the City Commission meeting, I love the company. So feel free to be there. And then the other thing I was going to just note is that I, after our first report, I'm going to go out the back door and let Melissa finish the meeting. So as I run away, I know that that was pre-planned. I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Lewis.
Okay. Again, I always want to reiterate that we have a very important election coming up in November, November 6th, to be exact. A week from tomorrow will be the last day to register to vote. And we want to make sure that everyone gets registered. You can also find some information on ksvotes.org relative to casting an early ballot. We are thrilled for Principal Tammy Becker and the entire Hillcrest staff, the students and families, that all the wonderful work that I've been hearing about when I first came in this district and all the wonderful work that they do day in and day out has been recognized with the National Blue Ribbon School Award. And I will say, this is the fourth school that we've had to receive a Blue Ribbon Award at Quill Run, Broken Arrow, and Woodlawn. And so definitely we want to congratulate the entire Hillcrest staff for receiving this huge honor. Only, one of only six in the state. So congratulations to Hillcrest. In addition to our 10 National Merit semifinalists, we are celebrating with both high schools the designation of nine National Merit Commended Scholars and two National Hispanic Recognition Program Scholars. So congratulations to all of our nationally recognized scholars. Three of our high school student journalists are finalists for the National Design and Photography Awards from the National Scholastic Press Association for their work on the budget that's over there at LHS and the Free Press at Free State. This is in addition to the budget earning a nomination for the prestigious Pacemaker Award. So congratulations to our student journalists and their faculty advisors. I also want to thank everyone, as Jessica mentioned, teachers, staff, and students, and parents, and community members who participated in all the Listening and Learning Tours. Our next tour stop is on next Tuesday from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. at First Presbyterian Church. That's at 2415 Clinton Parkway. And we've worked, Julie has worked with the Interfaith Alliance to select a church that was centrally located and had ample meeting space and ample parking. But we do want to encourage all community members to come out and attend and give us your feedback. Our International Walk to School Day is Wednesday, weather permitting. Many of our schools will be hosting special events and encourage our students to either walk or bike to school. So please be extra careful as you are driving. Please look out for little ones that may be walking or biking to school. October is National Principals Month. And we know how important the role of the principal is to the success of the school, second to the classroom teacher. And our communications specialist, Rachel Asbury, has created a quick video to thank our principals for their commitment and dedication to student achievement and success. And we'd like to share this video with you tonight. Thank Rachel for putting that video together. And definitely want to thank all of our principals. The superhero music was definitely befitting because they are in many ways superheroes. They focus on instruction day in and day out. But sometimes someone always has to go get the dog off the playground. So they do it all. So thank you so much to all of our building principals and assistant principals.
Okay. Do we have any patron commentary tonight, Julie? Okay. So board commentary. Anybody have anything you want us to talk to?
I have a couple things. Just wanted to report on three things that have happened the last couple of weeks. One, on October 1st, KASB held its Region 1 and Kansas City Area Fall Regional Meeting here at the ESC. And I want to say thank you to the staff here for making that a very successful meeting. I got lots of really great feedback from people that were in attendance and appreciation for our hosting of the meeting. Thank you to board members and staff that were able to make it that night. I felt like we had some pretty good conversation at our table talking about policy updates for the legislative session, the KASB legislative agenda, as well as an opportunity to have some cross-district discussion with some of our area districts about safety and security priorities, unmet needs, challenges, and successes. So it was a great learning opportunity with board members from our district as well as board members from other districts in our region. Board Policy Committee met on the first as well. And we finished up work on some things that are on our consent agenda tonight for first reading, our policies on gifts for students, donations to schools, and donations and bequests policies. We also have an item that's on tonight that came out of KASB's June policy updates that we're working through to allow staff to update all the statutory references for Kansas statutes, Section 72, that are in our policies. So had some good discussion about that, as well as some other recommended updates that we're still working on that came from KASB. So that's something that will be coming up probably at our next policy meeting and possibly board meetings to follow that. And then Facilities Committee met this past Thursday. G R and I, Kelly, I should have mentioned Kelly is at the Policy Committee meeting with me and does a great job. So thank you. And G R and I were at the Facilities Committee meeting last Thursday and got an update from our staff on the outcome of our bond sale. We did earn a premium on our bond sale. So that will help us in our capital planning budget. The capital improvement plan is in progress. I anticipate that the committee will see that at our, well, our next meeting will be at the beginning of December. And then it will, we'll review it then. And it'll be coming to the board for review shortly after that, I think, in early December. We also talked about closing out items on Southwest Middle School and Billy Mills Middle School projects, as well as updates on Free State and our upcoming construction projects at West Liberty Memorial and Lawrence High School. We heard an update on the progress for our turf replacement on our athletic fields, which is nearing completion. Also talked about the district progress in doing Alice training onsite with building staff, as well as what has been going on with the City of Lawrence Transportation Commission. That's one of the committees that we have a staff person that attends and then provides information and communication and feedback. There isn't really anything out of that update that I think we'll be hearing about anytime soon. But it's just, we touch base about that when we meet for this committee, as well as some updates on grounds and custodial issues, particularly surrounding kind of our upkeep of grounds and mowing and sort of that sort of thing. So we're continuing to have some conversations about those things in that committee as well. That's all I have. Thank you.
And I did get a chance to read Shannon has been working on updating the superintendent's basically position description because when we had was really old and kind of outdated. And so I imagine we'll have a draft for the whole board to read very quickly so that we can do that first review that we have to do with Dr. Lewis. And we've decided to base it on his entry plan rather than trying to make it kind of arbitrary based on some other type of model. This is a good thing for us to do with that first half of what we need to get done for this statute. So anybody else have anything else?
Yeah, we had another meeting for the committee that's studying a possible late start last week. And most of the discussion was focused on a couple of things, a survey by, trying to create a survey. What is the company that we always use?
What's that?
Patron Insight?
Patron Insight.
Thank you. And before that, some focus groups to reach out to different groups and different community groups. We decided that we would try and survey equally geographic areas of Lawrence and include families of eighth graders that would be coming up in the following year. And we looked at doing some focus groups with the Delt Committee. We were looking at focusing on trying to get a good sample size of free and reduced lunch families to get their input on how that would affect them, staff of different levels, and just working on getting that. I think we had a lot of interesting discussion about questions. What would be, you know, leading, not leading? And hopefully Patron Insight can help us hone those to get the information that we're looking for.
And if I could add to that, if the survey looks like it was designed by committee, it's because it was designed by committee. There will be at least one more version before we fine tune it. I do think we agreed actually to survey not only eighth graders, but basically sixth through 11th graders. And there are going to be a couple of start time options that people will choose from. One obviously is no change, then an 8:30 start time, and then a 9 o'clock start time. And as I do in these meetings, I try to update people on the school districts that have made this change. I think I might have mentioned that San Diego is making this change. St. Paul, Minnesota is the latest district to realize that later start times are good for kids. So, and we'll continue to update that as more schools start to make that move that I become aware of. And I actually found some new research, which I'll distribute to the committee as well on some of the benefits.
As you're thinking about focus groups, have you considered like honing in on parents who, probably already going to say that, already have that in mind, but parents that have students of multiple grade level? So like if there's a high schooler, that, but you also have that.
That's a very good point.
Elementary, so kind of.
I, I'm not sure if it was on there, but I'll make sure.
I, I'm not sure if it was on there, but I'll make sure it is.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, so now we need to go to consent agenda, but I know that Melissa has some retirements she's going to announce.
Yes, I apologize in advance if I say your name incorrectly, but we would like to recognize we have quite a few retirements. Bloom Paul of, for 24 years of service, John Bodie, 24 years of service, Linda Brandt, six years, Phyllis Buchell, 23 years of service, Joanna Cox, 34 years of service, kind of sad about that one, Angela Decker, 24 years of service, Terri Gillum, 20 years of service, Angeline Konig, 24 years of service, Betty Sisson, oh, sorry, Paula Myers, 29 years of service, Betty Sisson, 25 years of service, Rebecca Stiles, 25 years of service, Anne Turmelin, 30 years of service, Laura Craig, 20 years of service, and Patricia Orzulak, 20 years of service. Thank you so much for your dedication to Lawrence Public Schools.
Okay, do we have a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
I move we adopt the items listed on the consent agenda.
Second.
Johnson?
Yes.
Venture?
Yes.
Ingram?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Beeson?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
Okay, our first report tonight is state assessment report with Terri McEwen, Director of Assessment Research and Accountability.
As Terri is coming, we're excited to share with the board tonight our assessment results from 2018, those spring assessments, and those are the Kansas Assessment Program summative reports, and many districts like to call those autopsy data because that's, the students are no longer in that grade. But however, it provides some valuable information for us in terms of curriculum, issues that we may want to address, also just what are some of our strengths of our program, what are some areas we need to focus on. So, we're going to share the data with you, but more importantly, we're going to share with you how we're responding to the data from a standpoint of, you know, what are the implications for curriculum, what are the implications for certain groups of students? And so, we have Terri coming first to kind of share these results with you, and after which we'll have our team share how we're responding to this data.
Good evening, Terri McEwen, Director of Assessment, Research, and Accountability. Sorry. I'd like to, I have for you at your seats, the letter, the parent guide for the state assessment results, and just kind of want to point out something the commissioner points out in the first paragraph, remembering that assessments are just one of several measures teachers consider when gauging student progress. And this is, we know that this is a one-time assessment, the state assessment, in mathematics and in a one-time in English Language Arts. Having said that, though, it is the measure of how our students are progressing in terms of the state standards, because the state assessment is directly focused on those standards and asks questions that are specifically aligned to those standards. Some highlights and opportunities for us as we look at this data, we do demonstrate a percentage of students scoring at Level 3 or 4 that in most cases matches or exceeds the state in ELA, math and science, English Language Arts, I should use the acronym, math and science is measured by the Kansas assessments. We will only have comparative data at the state level for 2017 because the commissioner is actually presenting the 2018 data to the state board tomorrow, and I don't want to upstage him. We have, we are seeing some achievement gaps narrowing at Grade 10 in both ELA and math. For some groups, the performance between the two years is either flat or sometimes showing downward trend. However, we do see some upward momentum in other places. Achievement gaps between our racial groups do exist within all the tested grade levels, and we will be viewing, you will be hearing a little more about our curriculum work and standards alignment as we continue to focus on those gaps and look at what's causing them and find some solutions. So, the first thing I would like to show you is the Kansas State Assessments in the area of mathematics. We're going to be comparing 2017 and 2018 data. One thing to kind of think about is that as the state of Kansas crafted a goal statement that's required by the Every Student Succeeds Act in the U.S. Department of Ed, their goal statement was that by 2030, 75% of all students will score at Level 3 or above. So, the graphs you're going to see tonight depicts 75% as a top number. Don't misinterpret that that is the only goal that we are focused on, but it kind of gives us that direction to 2030 and the 75%. Something we've never done, I should have just, I could have given you this as a test, but we didn't. Some things that we might not be aware of, and I think a lot of the public is not aware of by any stretch, is the type of questions that our students are being asked on a state assessment. To set this up a little better, I need to talk about the construction of the test. The test consists of 30 fixed items, so every student at a grade level gets the same exact first 30 questions. So, those are a fixed set, number one is number one for all students. How you score on that fixed set of 30 students, of 30 questions, determines what is going to happen next, and there will be either a set of 25 questions in English Language Arts or a set of 30 more questions in mathematics that are adaptive based upon how you answer the fixed set of questions. So, if your first 30 questions are being answered at a lower level, you're struggling to answer them, you don't have many correct, your next set of questions are actually going to become quite much easier. The composite of the first section and the second section of the test is what actually creates the level score that you'll see. And on the third page of the handout I gave you, you can see the descriptors of the levels. Level 1 is that a student shows limited ability to understand or use the English language, whatever mathematics, whatever content it is, needed for college and career readiness. At Level 2, a student has basic ability to understand and use the concepts and knowledge needed for college and career readiness. Level 3 is that a student shows an effective ability to understand and use the skills and knowledge needed for college and career readiness, and Level 4 would be an excellent ability to understand and use those skills and concepts. So, it's kind of important to understand those levels. So, what you're seeing in the question, on the left-hand side, it's a Grade 7 question. The student, obviously, on the first part of the assessment had answered well enough that he's now, he or she has now been given a Level 4 question, and the question is about proportional relationships. So, it says a proportional relationship is shown in this table. Then it says which tables show the same proportional relationship, and then select all that apply. You'll see in the correct answer, that there are two correct answers for this. Students are often kind of thinking in terms of get the answer, and when we have multiple answers that could be correct, students could miss that there are more than one answer that needs to be chosen, and if they don't choose both answers, they could lose points on the assessment. The next item is a Grade 10, Level 3 question, and it asks the student to graph an equation, 5X plus 4, y equals 5X plus 4, and then they would have to find the graph that best depicts or that accurately depicts the answer to that question. So, that's kind of the scope of the type of questions. Some questions are technology-enhanced, they have to drag and drop things. Other questions are multiple answer, so you kind of see the level of difficulty that our students are encountering on state assessments. Our first slide is going to show aggregate data across all the grade level groups that take the assessment in mathematics, it's grades 3 through 8 and 10. This will depict all students, our free and reduced lunch students, students with disabilities, and English language learners, and then we will demonstrate race and ethnicity. As you look at this, you will see in the red bar a white box, or often it's above the box if we're lower than the state, but the white box depicts the Kansas State results from 2017 in that category. So, as an example, in 2017, all students in Lawrence were scoring, 40.1% of all of our students were scoring at Level 3 and 4 compared to 34.2% at the state. So, you can see across the different levels, and then the blue bar shows 2018. And so, you'll notice that there are some improvements, some drops, and a lot of kind of flat level performance. Next, this depicts by race, and this is an aggregate of all the grade levels, and comparative to the state. So, for example, in 2017, 14.6% of African-American students scored at Level 3 and 4 compared to 13.5 at the state. And again, you'll see some improvements, but again, it's mostly relatively stable or I wanted to do a little bit of a deeper dive into this, and we're going to look at that race differentiation in grade-banded levels. So, I grade-banded levels 3 to 5, grade 6 through 8, and grade 10. And the reason I didn't do this grade level by grade level is because when we get into elementary school, we have some grade levels that have a relatively small number of particular racial or ethnic groups, and we don't want to ever report out something that is completely So, first, let's look at the performance of each grade level. Okay, so this is an aggregate of the students at that grade level, and again, we can compare to the 2017 Kansas assessments. And if we look at the blue bar from the red bar, you'll see some drops in performance, some gains. I would point out Grade 5 as a gain, Grade 7, a slight gain in Grade 8.
What's the margin of error?
I would say most likely right around 3 to 4%.
Okay, so some of the, okay.
Now, here's our grade level banded performance. So, this is our students racially at elementary school, grades 3, 4, and 5 who take this Again, you'll notice some changes from 17 to 18. This is grade 6 through 8 by racial performance. Quite an increase in Asian performance from 17 to 18, slight increase in white performance. And this is Grade 10. So, we do notice an increase in African-American performance on the state assessment in mathematics in Grade 10, as well as our multiracial group. This table depicts, I made, we've made five attempts at trying to depict this, and we settled on this one. The white performance, the white percent of students scoring at Level 3 and 4 is depicted on the left by the, next to the year. Then you see in 2017, the percent of each racial or ethnic group that is scoring at Level 3 or 4, and then the percent of the gap between our white students scoring Level 3 and 4 and that specific race or ethnicity scoring Level 3 and 4. The next line down shows that in 2018, and then I was depicting either a decrease in that gap, which is in green, that's a good thing, or an increase in that gap, which is Next, let's talk about English Language Arts, and again, some sample items for you. This one is from, these are both from Grade 6. The test actually tests reading and comprehension, word abilities, vocabulary, and then it also tests writing, but I've used a writing question specifically because the students aren't actually asked to write anything anymore. They're asked questions about writing. So, it's about word choice, sentence, organization, et cetera. So, the first, sorry, the first question on the left would have been a multi-paragraph selection that students would have had to read. Once they have read that selection, they'll be asked three to five questions about that selection. So, they've read the selection, and the question about that passage right now is, read the sentence from the text, "When he moved from painting on canvas to creating larger murals, he realized how much he enjoyed working on a bigger scale." The word "scale" means what in that sentence? And each of those is a definition of scale, but the correct answer would have been proportion. And that's a Level 3 question at Grade 6. The next question is about writing, and what it asks is to rearrange the sentences in logical order. How would you have arranged those? And you can see that the student would have to decide which of those sentences should be first, et cetera. So, to just give you kind of a picture of how our students are being assessed. So, this is going to be sort of the same, the same view. We're going to look at aggregate data across grades 3 through 8 plus 10 in all these categories again, compared to the state in the white box for 2017. So, in 2017, 47.1%, sorry, percent of Lawrence students were scoring at Level 3 and 4 compared to 36% of the state. In the English Language Arts, we're seeing a relatively pretty flat level of performance from 17 to 18. We look racially at our performance, we will see again that in 2017, 24.9% of Black students were scoring at Level 3 and 4 compared to 17.7 at the state. And you can see pretty much, again, not huge increases or decreases, it's pretty much And so, we're going to look at grade by grade and then grade-banded race and ethnicity. So, grade by grade, we can look at each grade level compared to the state in 2017, and again, we don't see great leaps or declines in English Language Arts. We see a pretty nice incline in Grade 8. Everything else is relatively similar. And as we look at our scores by race, we can see that in grades 3 through 5, again, we have a lot of very similar performance between 17 and 18. You'll see an increase in Asian students' performance in 2018 in English Language Arts, and some declines in our Native American performance and our multiracial performance. and some declines in our Native American performance and our multiracial performance. In grades six through eight, you will see our Black students did decline in between 17 and 18, but you see an increase in our white students' performance, and again, an increase in Asian students, and increase in Native students' performance as well. And then at senior high school, we do see an increase of our Black students in ELA. Hispanic students also have experienced an increase, our Native students experienced And again, our table depicting the gap, so again, the top is 2017, the percent of students, white students scoring level three and four compared to Black, Hispanic, Asian, Native, and multiracial students. And then, whether the gap increases or decreases, we'll see a decrease in the gap between Black and white students in 2018, and a decrease in our Asian students and white students' And on the board enclosure, I did mention history government social studies as an assessment. It is an assessment that is being retired. It was one and done, is basically how it worked. They did it that one year, and they're not going to do it again. They hadn't done it quite that way before, we're not going to do it that way again. So we, Dr. Lewis and I decided we weren't going to perseverate on something that we're never going to really be able to use very well. But we will look at science, which traditionally, we have not done at the state level, but now we can. We have two years of solid data of science, but there are no released items for science, so I can't show you what a science item would look like. So, again, we go back to our percent of students scoring at level three and four. Remember, the science is given to grades five, eight, and 11. Okay? So this is a subset of the larger population that takes ELA and math. So you can see again, in just a couple of highlights, in 2017 to 2018, we do see an increase in our performance, and we were above the state. In our racial groups, so relatively similar performance. We do see an increase in white students' performance and in Asian students' performance.
So Terry, and you might be getting to this. It seems to me that kind of this particular chart at all three things has pretty much shown that we're underperforming against the state pretty consistently with our students with disabilities and our Native students. So, will we get to kind of what reasons you think that might be happening, what plans we have in place to address that?
Yes. And when Jerry and group come after me, that we're going to sort of dovetail one presentation to the next, so that we can sort of say, here's our data, and this is how we're responding to it, and they will give you some concepts of what we're doing. So our grade-level performance, and again, remember, this is given in grades five, eight, and 11, and we can see that our grade levels are performing above the state in science in both, well, we only know 17. Tomorrow, we'll find out what 18 shows. But we do see some nice increases in performance between 17 and 18 in science. Having said that, we still have gaps between our students of color and our white students, and so this table depicts those gaps.
So I have a long list of questions, but I'll wait to, you probably want us to wait and hear the other group.
Yeah, what I would ask, if you have any questions relative to just the data?
The data? Okay. So I do have some questions relative to data. I'm interested that we didn't talk about gender at all, and that particularly in science, we didn't talk about gender. I'm also wondering about intersectionality. When we look at the students who are achieving, what we know about those students in terms of socioeconomic status, et cetera. So I'll start with those, I have others.
Okay. So we have not disaggregated by gender. We can do that. The state doesn't report it that way, but it would be something that we would definitely be able to do in a follow-up report to the board, sort of showing you the gender differences as well as the racial and ethnic differences.
Is that?
Yes, yes, we can get that report to you.
And then, that question about what we know about the children, or the students who are achieving, any common characteristics or anything that we can identify within them that might tell us something about them? And here's why I'm asking. Because in most of these cases, when you look at the margin of error, it's not, and when you're only looking at two years, trend is almost impossible, and there's really nothing statistically significant about much of the data that we're looking at. And so you almost are left in a space where you have to talk about absolute numbers. And when you look at absolute numbers, you're looking at like 20% of students achieving where we would want to target achievement, and that means 80% are not. And while it's, so that is concerning to me, that we're looking at it so closely in terms of like what happened between these two years, instead of talking about this in terms of absolute numbers. So, given that, I would like to know, what do we know about the students that are achieving?
So, are you thinking of looking for the exact numbers?
Are there any common characteristics? Do we ever look at that in terms of understanding what we know about where the students have strengths and what might be working for or against them?
So I think we do at the teacher level. I don't know that we do at, as we're aggregating and looking at data numbers. We may not necessarily know that as well, but we definitely would know that at the teacher and school level.
Okay. I have a follow-up question to that later, that I'll be sure to come back to in terms of evaluation and how we look at data at the building level. And I can understand that we have, we are a predominantly white district, so we cannot look at building-level data without potentially disclosing information about individual children, and I appreciate that. But I will want to have some understanding about how we're evaluating at the individual building level, how they are doing across time for, you know, if we can identify where there's weaknesses in the district, or we can target funding or resources would be helpful to understand. So I'll take a pause and see if anybody else has any data questions.
Good news is we're in here.
So with that, I'm going to hand off to Jerry Kimball and her, and our team, and we will continue with some additional information.
You might have to speak up.
I'm going to have to turn the mics up.
Yeah. It's hard to hear you.
Please. Turn the mics up.
Oh, but no, it's dying down.
Terry, I actually, I'm sorry, I just remembered one more. I was waiting, I just wanted to make sure you got the good exercise. I noticed, I think I might have, in the MAP testing, do we not have data by ethnicity in MAP scores?
We do, and we, in the interest of not having you bring your sleeping bags tonight, we just concentrated tonight on the state assessments.
Okay.
But I do think that we will, we can come back at, and show you, you know, MAP data and by race and by grade levels that would, you know, continue to inform this conversation.
And then, another data question. So last year around this time, we got the same report, and I was an audience member, so I wasn't up here. And I had this burning question when I was sitting in the audience, like, oh, what about the questions around access to enrichment programming, et cetera? And then like a week or so later, or a couple weeks later it must have been, you showed data related to how many students were performing, or how many students had access to like AP courses, and how many students were participating in particular activities? Is that something that the board would anticipate seeing relatively soon in relationship to this data?
Yes, they would, yes.
Thank you.
Hey. Jerry Kimball, Assistant Superintendent of Leading Learning and Technology. So after reviewing the state assessment results, we're going to now turn our focus to KISA and how this all fits together. So KISA, of course, is the Kansas Education Systems Accreditation, and it is the process that focuses on system results, which is different from the past, where we focused on individual building results. KISA will change the way that we do business in Lawrence Public Schools. I like to use a camera analogy. In the past, we have said that the picture, if you will, of a successful student is based mainly on assessments, and academic assessments. But now, the state board with the new vision for education has widened our aperture on that, and we are actually looking at more areas than we ever have before. We're looking, if you look at the front of your packet there, I know it's hard to read on the board, we're looking at the social-emotional, kindergarten readiness, individual plans of study, high school graduation, and post-secondary success as well. Through extensive research, the State Board of Education determined that four Rs lead to education system quality. And those four Rs are under the evidence-based factors, the relationships, relevance, responsive culture, and rigor. So, last year, we entered year one of the KISA cycle, and we were to work through an improvement cycle. The first thing we did was a needs assessment of those four Rs. All of the building leadership teams participated in this process, and we determined the two areas that we would focus on for this year, and those are relationships and relevance. So at this time, I want to share with you what the district KISA goals are, and then we're going to go into more detail as how that dovetails into the assessment results you saw, and how we're going to move forward, and what supports we're offering, and what things we'll be doing differently in light of those results. So our relationship goal, during the 2018-19 school year, we will engage students and school families and community members by providing them opportunities to share input in district decision-making through various avenues. So the next three slides, and I gave you these in the packet, because that is a lot of information that is on these slides. The next three slides have the 13 action steps that the district is taking to accomplish this goal. So for instance, you have actually been involved in the first one, and that's the superintendent's listening tour. So the relationship goal, of course, focuses on building relationship with communities and families and students, and Dr. Lewis's listening tour is one of those ways that we are reaching out to the community to get access and information from them about our schools. So you can see the 13 steps that we have here.
I know that we have, sorry, we have like support for new special education and certified staff. And the goal, you have the relationship goal, and maybe, I don't know why I didn't notice, but I know we need to focus, our primary focus on like students, school families, is, I almost wonder if you can put like staff or teachers in that verbiage too, because, especially based on the listening tour, we hear that some teachers say that they don't feel like their voice is being heard, so maybe having that added, I don't know.
Was that under?
So it says, relationship goals during the 2018-19 school year, we will engage students, students, school families, community members.
And then faculty?
Yes.
Yeah, that's an easy A.
We can do that. So these are the 13 steps that we're taking at the district. Now keep in mind that these are the district-level steps, and you're going to hear more about school-level steps in just a few minutes. Our district relevance goal is during the 2018-19 school year, Lawrence Public Schools will develop, align, and implement consistent and equitable curriculum, instruction, and assessment to raise the achievement of all students as evidenced by state and nationally-normed measures. So this goes right into those state assessment results that you saw. Here, we have 12 action steps that the district is taking to reach this goal. And I, of course, those are in your packet as well. And one that we are doing that is very different than anything we've done in the past with our new director roles, we have targeted support for principals' instructional leadership role. So we're focusing on instructional leadership with principals. So that's a good example of the relevance action step.
Can you say more about that instructional leadership? What does that mean exactly?
We're going to hear all about that in just a minute from our two directors, if that's okay? If you still have that question at the end, I'll happily address it, but I think you'll hear what you're looking for in just a minute. All right. So, with KISA, relationships plus relevance plus rigor plus responsive culture is supposed to equal results, and that's the direction that we're headed. And those results will be not only on assessments, but graduation rates, ultimately, post-secondary success for all of our students. So these are the two district goals, and now, our elementary director, Darcy Kraus, and our secondary director, Rick Henry, will share with you an overview of the work that they are doing at the school level. That'll be followed by Jennifer Busselo sharing an update of the curricular work that we're doing, Kevin Harrell will talk about special education, and Leah Wisdom will speak to you about the work we're doing in, with English language learners, learning coaches, and professional development. So the directors will highlight the things that we're doing differently, and the supports that we're putting in place to provide results for each of our students. So I will turn it over now to Rick and Darcy.
Good evening. Rick Henry, Director of Secondary Schools. I want to talk to you a little bit about the school-level KISA work. I'm going to speak primarily about the school improvement plans. Kind of a little, little history here of where we've been. May 31st, all of our building leadership teams met, are district-wide, and the goal was for them to review data, rubrics, the KISA rubrics, and begin drafts of their school improvement plans for the upcoming school year. Goals and subsequent action steps were reflected of the two Rs that Jerry mentioned, relevance and relationships. And something new was added. We created partner schools, so that within each level, high school, middle school, elementary, each school had a partner. The rationale behind that was that partner schools would be able to collaborate, they would be able to hold each other accountable, they would be able to share ideas throughout this process, and just have another counterpart to bounce ideas and actions off of. July 30th, during our back-to-school administrative PD day, our partner school administrators collaborated. They worked further on their, on their school improvement plans, and this was the first opportunity they had to meet together as partners. And this was the first opportunity they had to meet together as partner schools.
Were teachers involved in that discussion at all?
Not at that point because that was an administrative PD. But part of, part of the goal-setting was to take it back and get input from, from their staff and also their site councils and any other parent-community groups that they work with. So.
Or they submitted the improvement plan.
Yes, yeah. Because September 15th was when those improvement plans were coming in. And those, those were reviewed by leadership here at the district level. And, and then our plan, well, they're already being put into a, a drive in the same format. All of them are formatted the same. I'll show you what those look like. Here's an example of a secondary KISA, sorry, I did it on my computer. There's an example of the secondary KISA plan. Happens to be one of Lawrence High's goals. But you can see that it's, it's in the same format as the district goal. And the reason, rationale behind that is that when our onsite visitation team comes for their year-two KISA visit, they'll have all of the forms together. They will all look the same. They, once they learn the format, it will work, work for, for any of the schools that they're reviewing at that time. I'll also point out that all of the, all of the plans were, were created in, in a Smart E format, which means that's an acronym. You're probably all familiar with SMART goals. But that means the S is for specific. They are specific goals. M is measurable. A is attainable. R, relevant. T, that, that there's a time, timeframe or a timetable for all the goals. And then the, the E stands for equity. And all goals are framed with equity in mind as well. So there's an example of a secondary KISA plan, an example of an elementary plan. You can see the similarity in look. Information is different. I'm sorry, I did it again. There we go. I'll close my computer, so I won't, won't use it instead. So that, my, my goal was to share the school improvement plan process with you, what we've followed, and to show you a couple of examples. Now I'll hand it off to Darcy Kraus, Elementary Director.
Good evening. I'm Darcy Kraus, Elementary Director. Let's see if I can get this to go. So Rick mentioned our partner schools. And to your point, now is when the teachers and the faculty, all staff, play a role. Part of our goal this year was to move this from a static document to something that's more of a, a living plan that will be revisited throughout the year. So two times throughout the year, our partner schools will be meeting. And they will share their respective plans. They will share their celebrations and also their challenges. Kind of a, a problem-solving forum, if you will. And teachers will be involved in that. Our first opportunity to do that for our elementary schools is on October 19th. And this is a template of the guided collaboration or discussion that we're going to provide for them. These two sister schools, as I call them, New York and Pinckney, will share their respective plans. And then they will set about answering these five questions in the bubbles surrounding the Venn diagram. Those also mirror the questions that our OVT or our outside visitation team, onsite visitation team, will ask us as leadership when they visit later in the year. The second opportunity to meet and see where they're at, how they're coming on their goals, their timeline, those benchmarks along the way, will be in second trimester. We've given the buildings a window of time and provided some district funds for subs so that they can have a, a time that's captured within the duty day for them to again revisit this plan.
Did you say how the partner schools were?
Yeah.
Did I miss that? Sorry.
No, you didn't. But it's a really good question. So we took a lot of schoo-, we took schools that were similar in demographics, similar in size, and married them hopefully logistically as far as distance and that kind of thing so that they will have the opportunity to do some one-off exploration at each other's schools as well. We have two schools, Langston Hughes and Prairie Park, that are moving forward with their PBL, professional development. And so since their schedules are similar and a little dissimilar from the rest of them, we use that variable as, as part of the pairing as well. So a lot of different variables went in, but basically demographics and like-minded, or not like-minded, but like schools as far as, as where they're at.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say, secondary schools will be doing a similar activity when, when we're, during our partnering times.
And this is probably, Rick and I talk about this a lot. We feel very honored to partner with our principal teams and support them in the many, many hats that they wear. But our instructional folk, or excuse me, our focus this year is on their role as instructional leaders. And as we walk through these kind of boots-on-the-ground action steps, you'll see that it all dovetails into that role specifically. One of the things I'm most excited about is the very first one, and that is our principal PLCs. Our meetings have shifted in format this year. It was based on a model that Dr. Lewis brought with him. And it focuses on the professional development of our building administrators instead of like the technical kind of flybys, as we say. And so we actually don't even meet here at ESDC any longer. We meet off-site at hosting campuses. And the first 30, 45 minutes is spent in professional development. I just got done with one of these. And we spent a long time talking about our ELA, our curriculum, how we are, the challenges that we're seeing within the schools, and how we are addressing those. We have scenarios. We can, we, we learn with and, and from each other, quite frankly, because we all have to have those critical conversations with our teachers. And it's best if we learn and have those statements and get to practice with each other. And it's, it's amazing to watch the principals go around and go, oh, I didn't, oh yeah, that's a good point. I didn't think of that. And, and take notes. The second part of that are walkthroughs. So the hosting principal shares what the focus areas are within their school. We divide, we go out in teams, and we go into classrooms. And then we, for about 20, 25 minutes, then we come back, having used a walkthrough tool, and we debrief. And so the hosting principal gets the benefit of this latitude of perspective that all the administrators have captured. We explained it to the prin-, or to the teachers. We sent out a little paragraph that let them know ahead of time what this was for. And it truly is so that principals can calibrate and learn from and with each other. It went beautifully the first time around, so I'm anxious to continue that. The elementary and secondary directors spend at least 50% of our time in schools. Dr. Lewis has provided us that latitude and made it very clear that he is freeing up some, most of our time to, to be out in the schools, which we both appreciate. Meeting with principals, Rick and I have scheduled meetings at least once a month that usually last anywhere from 90 minutes to two hours. We have our informal visits even more frequently. Again, we had, take the opportunity to do walkthroughs. Just did one this afternoon. I was at Quail Run. Walk through the school with the principal. Then we step outside. We talk about what each one of us has seen and then talk about next steps for them, how they can go in and, and support that teacher, talk about those celebrations, and maybe next steps for those, that growth potential.
So, Darcy, I'm, you might be getting to this, but I just need, I have this clarifying point. Back to the benchmarks that were sent, that were set based on, you were talking about the individual school improvement plans, I believe, is you were, and you have a team of people coming together to set benchmarks for tracking progress, correct?
Well, and that progress can look a variety of different ways. So for, for example, for the relationship goal, those benchmarks may be parent surveys throughout the year. So they, it's not necessarily just an academic percentage benchmark.
Right, I appreciate that. But I'm wondering, when you are doing the walkthroughs in our, in our, the individual time that you have with the principals, are you then checking in on those benchmarks at that time to say what progress is being met? And when you, I mean, a component of it has to be looking a bit at where they're going in terms of academic success. Like when Terry was talking about, if we look at students of color specifically, who may, we know are not performing where we want them to be, and that is our responsibility. Are you at every one of those visits checking in to see how are we doing at the individual student level? And how are you, you personally tracking that information and evaluation for the principals?
Perfect, thank you. One of those, the very last point that you made, I'm going to address here in that second bullet. But thank you for bringing forth our different FOCID, because that's exactly what we do. We go through the school improvement plan. We talk about their equity, their E teams, where that's at. And then we talk about data a lot. Each month, Rick and I kind of, not kind of, we talk about what our focus is going to be, like what's our main topic. So this week, I have six formal principal meetings. So last week, I emailed them and say, our focus is going to be on data. So I don't care what format you have it in for me, but that's what we're going to disaggregate and dig into together. We're going to talk about our structure. We're going to talk about what that looks like as far as your collaboration time and how you. It doesn't help if they are just the purveyors of the knowledge, right? They need to be able to convey what they're going to do in those growth steps and then take that further into what does that look like in professional development for your buildings. So this month is data for Rick and I. That's what we're hitting because we just exited our first benchmarking period.
Okay. And so a piece of it sounds like it's a combination of mentorship and providing some opportunity for professional, professional development that did not exist previously, but then evaluatively, if the principal in the building is not achieving at a particular benchmark, particularly as it relates to how we are addressing the needs of students of color, how are they then being held accountable for that underperformance?
So before, it seemed the conversations were more cursory, if you will. And now, that second bullet point, those individual leadership goals and action steps, Rick and I have worked with the building principal to develop their very own personal leadership goal based on that instructional role hat, if you will. So what does that look like? And then, what do you want me to hold you accountable for, is a question that I ask of them. We have all of this documented and articulated in a manner that I have, I have not seen before. And any action items that they have, they share that they are going to present to their staff, I have them link, as does Rick, link into this document so that when we get ready to do these evaluations, we can copy-paste, actually. But I mean, we have articulated information that speaks directly to the goals that we are holding them accountable for. As far as a number, we have not yet derived that. That'll be in conversations with Dr. Lewis as we develop after our strategic plan. We will develop those types of, I think you're talking about actual number numbers?
I've just, I've seen some data recently related to principal evaluation techniques and forms. And the improvement or the reduction in the achievement gap being a really critical component of the puzzle. So I'm really glad to see that you guys are doing this in a systematic, thoughtful way. And then I just want to be frank, I want to hold people accountable, even though I know this is a systemic, institutionalized racism that we're looking at. It's still pretty shameful what the numbers are. And the numbers are so small in terms of the students of color within this district that if we can't get after this in a really aggressive way, then someone has to be accountable. And I don't mean to be pointing at principals, but I'm glad to see that we're looking at this really carefully. And when it does, when there isn't advancements or we're not seeing improvement, as a board member, I'm just saying that I want some evidence that we're taking action at that point, yeah.
And one of the things, one of the main differences that I see this year, and Dr. Lewis has started an assessment committee where we are basically taking an autopsy of where we're at and the different assessments, the purpose for them, the timeline. There is nothing that is off the table. And basically rebuilding in a structure that will support how we're moving the needle in getting the numbers that, that we so desire.
I really appreciate the rigor.
And, and the other thing that I think, even as a building principal, if I can put on that hat for a moment. Our data previously was given more in the, the bar graphs. And I would present it to my staff, and quite frankly, it stopped there. It was like, this is where we're at with X. But now we're taking that further into the building level and then even further into the classroom level. The last two bullet points I have are really a increase. What do I want to say? An advancement in the role
Okay.
of the principal. And that is the role of instructional coach. Because again, it doesn't do us any good to sit and observe the data. But how are you going to get into the rooms and have those critical conversations with those teachers? And so we call that coaching on the red line. Our students have that proximal zone of learning where we know they learn best, as do our principals, as do our teachers, right? And so that's what we, when I step out in the hallway and Rick steps out into the hallway with those principals, that's what we're doing. We're saying, I see this, you see that. Now what are we going to do about it?
Okay.
And so that sense of accountability and rigor is something that I've never experienced in this district before. That, and then working in tandem with Jenny, as far, or Dr. Basolo, as far as the curriculum leaders. Before, they were more, principals were more cursory. They sat back, were more audience members. And now they are integral parts of leading that professional development. So that their staff sees them as instructional leaders. And when they deliver that information, their staff sees them as credible. And it's my job to make sure they have the capacity and the confidence to deliver the information.
And Kelly, I will tell you this. Goal two in my entry plan is ensuring that we have a laser-like focus on our student data. So we are closing those achievement gaps. We talked a lot about this, this spring assessment data, which we call autopsy data. But you know, when you do an autopsy, it's, it's too late. And so we're going to present to the board in, in, in the future here what, what our current data is. Because we want to have a pulse on every single student. And we're working on a spreadsheet. Terry has got me a spreadsheet where we'll, we'll be able to show every single school, their level three and stu-, three and four students, you know, in the entire building, and down to the individual ethnic group with the N count. And so we'll, if a building has 20 native students, we'll have that data. And we'll, we'll have a pulse on, on the movement of that data.
And if it's only 20, we can help those 20.
Exactly, exactly. If it's only two, we can help those two, yes.
I like the general, I guess, philosophy is what I'm hearing you say about, it, it seems you're, we're actually calling principals on the carpet to have, to ownership of their building progress. Because it's just been frustrating, I mean, to see the same trends or the same general theme. And but now it sounds like we have, like you said, a laser action, action plan that is owned by all levels.
It is. And the other part is the position that Rick and I had. I, I was not able to avail myself of that support. And Dr. Lewis, you've heard him talk repeatedly about how this role is so important in supporting of our principals and allowing us the time and opportunity to do so. The principals feel more supported and, and are willing to take those risks. And we know that outside your comfort zone is where that greatest growth occurs, so.
And we're going to model that too, as Darcy spoke to. We have, we'll have an assessment group here, where we'll look at data and hold ourselves accountable in terms of what supports do our, our individual buildings need. So we'll be looking at data on a monthly basis here, a quarterly basis as well.
And even the subset, kind of an infrastructure, like for example, right now, Rick and I are working with a subcommittee on a new, more consistent sit process. Prior to that, it was more siloed and, and the schools did it differently. And we're working with a K-12 group in order to develop. There will still be some autonomy at the building level, but it, it will have a more consistent view. So that if you move from building to building, you're not talking apples to oranges.
Something else I might add is that we're, we're really taking pains, great pains, to model what we want to see in the buildings. So our monthly administrative professional development, we make sure that, that we're not just. not just standing and delivering, we are showing them, sharing information with them in ways that we want to see that, that information shared at the building level. So, and, and not just that, but as we go into buildings, we're, we're trying to model the behavior that, that we need to see. So that's, that's something else. And it's amazing that that, that takes a lot of work and a lot of time, but it's so worth it. And, and just to, just to, I, I met with one of the middle school principals last week to plan the middle school principal meeting coming this, this Thursday at his school. And he's just so excited about what we're doing. He wants to get his, his colleagues into classrooms, he wants other people's eyes on, on what the teachers are doing and, and what he's doing. And I, I hadn't anticipated that level of excitement. So that made me even more excited and honored to, to be leading them.
Are there any other questions, Forrest? Yeah, I'll turn it over to Dr. Baslow.
Good evening. I'm Jennifer Baslow, curriculum director, and excited to talk a little bit about some new approaches that we're doing and, and how we're answering some of the data gaps and concerns in student performance and achievement data. The number one thing to come out of this presentation is that we have a focus on getting back to the standards, and we believe that that is a, a leading gap. But I also want to identify that curriculum is never in silos. We could have the best curriculum, but if we're not implementing it well and looking at assessment data, it's that triangle that really gives us that comprehensive look that we can start to feel and, and look at expertise practice. So what we are doing, I know you've seen the timeline, but we're really focusing on a timeline that is based off the state Department of Education as they approve standards. We're immediately looking and establishing district leadership teams with a K-12 approach. And the exciting part about my position is that we can make sure that that alignment's happening, where maybe perhaps in other models that we had elementary content specialists and secondary content specialists, but maybe they always didn't dovetail quite as strongly as we wanted to. So with that state standards-based focus, everything we do, every resource we adopt, current resources we're looking at, we're going back to standards. So while that's easily said, I think it's a huge refresher for our district. The other thing we're really focusing on is our instructional practices. When I mentioned tier one and tier two, tier one is the instructional practices every student should be receiving. So providing some fidelity of that, we feel, is really important. And as we talk about that, we're also dovetailing to the bullet, second to bottom bullet, which is this district instructional model. So providing some stability in regards to the expectations that we're asking of teachers, not only as we build curriculum, but as we implement what's happening in the classroom, how we build walkthrough models, or walkthrough tutorials. So we're really trying to be comprehensive and intentional about anything that we do. And as you know, curriculum touches everything. We've done a lot of work already, and we're really starting to get the plane off the ground for ELA as our focus this year. World Languages is getting some attention too, and content scope and sequences. So elementary started this June, you probably heard me speak a little bit to the work. We already have infrastructures built that house current, modern documents, prioritizing standards. We've had the elementary, the amazing team of elementary curriculum leaders that encompasses special education, ELL teachers, we have a full gamut administrators, that we're really spent time in unwrapping the standards, which they've told me that they haven't done in years and years and years. So we're getting their hands dirty, and they are serving in terms of a capacity building function to go out, and then we're allotting some professional development time in a, kind of a train the trainer model. But the exciting part about that is it's not just teachers that are being trained and going out and trying to train colleagues. It's a principal, at the elementary level, it's a principal teacher presentation, and they're getting to meet in grade level bands. So we have a lot of exciting work, and already they're saying, the feedback we have received is that that's been a useful time, where not only is the work that they're doing being launched, but that they have time to collaborate with their like colleagues at the district level in elementary. So all the resources that we're building, state assessment links, excuse me, state links to resources and standards are all built in Power School right now with specific curriculum documents, there's feedback loops, so that we can constantly hear back from our teachers and not hear what we want to hear. And so that's been really important work. The cultural relevance and practices piece, I want to make sure that that's not just starting to become something that we're saying. We, the exciting part is I have never talked about cultural relevance, CRT practices as much as I have in the last six to 12 months, and that part is crucial. I think almost daily we're talking in every meeting about how CRT practices show up. So it's not just standalone meetings or trainings, we're really starting to look at not just resources we're bringing in, but our current resources and how we're using it. So as we look at the dip in the data with the Native American population and their performance, that's not acceptable. So as we talk about our ELA alignments, critical even this evening, we spent time, Rick and I did, with our high school ELA chairs and district leadership and principals, and not only aligning the classes between the two high schools, but what we're doing in the classes and what 21st century instruction looks like. And so while those conversations are hard, we're building trust, building capacity, and keeping that focus on what our students need and do students see themselves in the curriculum. And then as we look at adopting new resources that we've budgeted for specific to ELA in the timeline, we're looking at, are all races represented? So we've had some really critical conversations, and as you can imagine, a controversial novel that we're continuing to work on. And while those conversations have not been easy, it's led us to really integrate those conversations naturally. So I'm excited about the work there, we have more to do. New approach to curriculum leadership work, I think is still relying to being the only person at the curriculum role officially and not having that middle content specialist model that our districts had in, in prior years, is, it's caused me opportunities to directly sit down with many, many teachers. So from a curriculum resource standpoint, I get emails constantly from teachers and, and pushing out, we've built group emails specific to subject areas where I'm able to communicate directly with high school ELA teachers. So they're hearing from me directly, but they're also getting some boots on the ground in the relationship aspect of sitting down for some, some curriculum meetings. Example of that would be right now with our high school ELA alignment work that we're doing between the two high schools. It'll, it affords, we brought those ELA chairs into the conversation, and then from there, they are working with our departments just in alignment to coming back. And we're doing that intentionally before we even sit down to start to look at building scope and sequences for high school to make sure that we're offering the same classes. And currently, we, we don't. We don't have the same equity and the same opportunities between the two schools. So what's, what's, it's helping us to hear directly from teachers and causing us to get out in buildings a little bit more to be just more involved and understand, and most importantly, build some trust and, and hear them and, and see what's working and what's not working. So that's a big, big conversation and a huge win that we're excited about, although we have more work to do. We also are being very intentional about the data conversations. So as we sit down and start to write scope and sequencing for some of these, example, high school ELA courses, bringing the data along. So we no longer want to be reactive and look at our data and say, "Shucks, what that, what we said was going to happen didn't happen or didn't work." So we're trying to really think about what do they need now and how are we going to support them? And if that doesn't work, what do you need for the support? So just thinking differently, but also having those conversations at our levels as well as building levels with the work that Rick and Darcy are doing, and getting out ahead of it and being proactive. We're also having some exciting conversations about interim assessments. As a district, we haven't been doing interim assessments, which is a good way to dipstick the alignment of standards and what's happening. So while we've had some great conversations about MAP data, we've been looking at that conversations with Dr. McEwen about what that looks like. And there's two different ways to do interim assessments, but the big takeaway from that is that teachers would have an opportunity to not only have conversations in their PLC groups about what these test items might look like, and, and are we teaching it in the same way that it's being presented? And how can we get students to connect to that? But also the powerful conversations that come out of those data pieces as we talk about being proactive versus reactive. As we are just looking at today in a meeting with Dr. Lewis and Dr. McEwen, some of these assessments are 60 minutes or less, and teachers can also go in and build mini tests. So it doesn't have to be this giant stop, shut down your building schedule to do this assessment. It can be tiny, I call it dipsticking, just to say, "Test the waters, check the measurement." So at the end of the year, there shouldn't be any surprises with how we're doing. So again, getting back to the standards, it should be looping. And then lastly, the last bullet, revisiting our resource needs and use. We have a plethora of resources out there, but as you, I'm sure you've probably heard from our constituents and teachers, we have some outdated resources. We've got, you know, different mindsets and pushpools of what kind of, should we use digital formats, should we use paper, paper texts? And so, again, going back to that building relationships and being transparent, if we're thinking about 21st century practices, let's talk about that. So we've had some good conversations, Rick can attest to, even today at the ELA level about what the state is looking at, and ELA, for example, being a, a set of skills and not so much just content anymore. But having a, a trusting relationship where we can have that conversation, I think, is important so that when it comes to things like resource adoption and how we're teaching, we can make movement. So working on less, "This is being done to me," and more of, "I'm empowered to be a part of the solution and conversation." And so I'm excited about that work, although I will be the first to say, "We have a lot to work on." We're also excited about our curriculum council that we have. So when we think about culturally relevant practices, what we're putting in place, we also want, before we bring things to the board, to get more of a constituent support. So as we look at, at our parents that are going to be serving on that committee and looking at that K-12 alignment, building this curriculum council that things are vetted through and multiple perspectives are given then, because we don't ever want to think something's a great idea, get a couple teachers to approve, and feel like that's a, a, a great rollout. So just being very intentional, slowing down, and everything goes back to standards. And it's a great, when teachers have left already, if they email and say, "This is the standards that supports Jennifer, we're interested in this." So I think that we're getting back to some really good practices, so I feel good about the work, but I would say it's just a launch. So, I'll pause there for questions.
Is there a basic, like a ideal timeline or skeleton, like, okay, by this, we hope to have addressed XYZ kind of thing? And are we able to see that timeline?
Great question. One thing that we have done is, I think, fatigued our teachers in getting curriculum committees together that have gone on for years without getting resources. So I think if you talk to some of our constituents right now and say, "What do you need?", they're, they'll say something about resources. And we've been very, it's good practice to do the curriculum work, decide what you need, and then adopt the resource, but I think we've fatigued some of our staff in, in maybe past well-intended approaches. So timeline, we're talking, moving, like right now, elementary curriculum is meeting monthly, middle school, we're establishing teams in high school as soon as we get that alignment, establishing teams. So we're looking at, adoption would be this spring. So assertive, I would say, time schedule, and we're not going to rush the work, but I think that's providing teachers some hope, that this won't be a committee I'm sitting on for three years. And the exciting part is all the work that we're doing in, in aligning our standards and prioritizing, we're creating essential questions, big ideas, is a great, all these tools are the next pieces that we need in our phase two of our curriculum alignment, which is common formative assessments. So it's another tool to dipstick, look at our practices, and the, the great part, these are teacher-built, so we're not looking at going out and reaching outside for the resources, but we're empowering our teachers and acknowledging them for the professionals that they are to build this and then to have good instructional conversations about their data. So definitely a phased implementation, but building some trust back so we can do the work.
Do you say something about students too? In the, I thought, in the committees or having, did you say?
Oh, no, not necess, not necessarily in this conversation, but we have talked about, in a controversial novel that we're discussing right now, from a curriculum level, we're bringing in student voices and a student survey, especially at some of our high school levels of work, so. But, but I think it is crucial that we get those multiple perspectives on the ground floor.
I'm hearing lots of great stuff, I'm really excited about it. I just wanted to maybe make a comment about assessments. I, I really appreciate that we are looking at being more thoughtful about how we're doing assessments and what, how we're using the data from the assessments we get. I hope that at the same time, we're also looking at how we can spend less of our time doing assessments. I think, on the whole, that is, that is something that, you know, at the state level, Randy Watson, Dr. Watson has talked about, you know, them trying to reduce the load on us for their requirements, but I think, it, it feels, as a parent, it feels like my children spend a lot of time taking assessments, you know, standardized assessments, between MAP three times a year, AMES Web, state assessments. And so, you know, having interim assessments to, to, you know, help us better gauge where we're at is, and I like that, but just.
Being thoughtful.
Being thoughtful, right. And I, I think, I would be very supportive of changing the way that we approach that, if that's really the direction we need to go.
And I appreciate you sharing that. We, Dr. Lewis is spearheading an assessment team, and we just talked about that today, specifically a little more worried about elementary as we stack. They, they have more assessments than anyone else, and so I, I agree. I think our plan right now may be to just try to have a, maybe a smaller focus this year, just to see how that goes. And then, of course, we want to hear from our teachers and, and hear how useful they are, how useful the analytics are. So I appreciate you sharing that, because I think that's critical to the conversation.
And then, and then thinking about, as we think that through toward the end, how does, how does that information then become, how is it communicated to parents and is it use, is it useful? Because I can foresee that time when you go to the parent teacher conference and you sit down and like, "Okay, where's the MAP data?" Well, we're not doing MAP anymore. And then parents will be saying, "Well, what are you doing?" And so, you know, being able to have something to communicate to parents about the why and what's, what we're learning, what's important. Thanks.
Absolutely, thank you.
I'm sorry, Jessica did say she was going to leave. I, I have two, maybe three questions. So this is a really ambitious plan, and I certainly commend the, you know, everyone for the hard work that they put into this. Assume a really optimistic scenario where this is really going to make an impact, what would be kind of the timeline you would expect to, for this to actually have that impact? Are we looking at, we put it all in place in two years down the road, three, five?
It's a great question. So the timeline that we built is, like, let's say, ELA, for example, because ELA is going through the curriculum realignment process this year, then they should be implementing curriculum next year and then building assessments, like common assessments. So by year three, they should be fully implemented in the assessment and alignment pieces. Strategically, we, we tried to be thoughtful of how we align the content areas as well because of the budget capacities with resources. So I think that, that from a planning point, it can launch from a true implementation and, and seeing some benefits from our state assessments. I think that there, we would probably push out maybe a little bit longer than that, just being realistic. The other challenge, and, and we're excited, our, our principals are doing a lot of work in their buildings and using PLCs differently. I'll, examples, Free State's been very intentional about some ways that they're talking about standards and aligning standards. So at the admin PDs, they've given me some space to kind of talk about some things that maybe bill principals can do in their buildings. But we do have, for this year, some of those maybe science and social studies that aren't getting that same amount of attention as the ELA because of that alignment. So you would probably see more impact, you know, ELA's getting all the attention, math is next year. So we are trying to be mindful that that's a realistic challenge, to be honest.
Thanks. Actually, another question Dr. Lewis already answered, you know, because I think one of the things that is important, I mean, the, the, you know, the larger picture of this, I think, is great, but you really have to focus in on individual students. And if you have a group that you can identify, you know, and I appreciate the laser-like focus, I sort of wonder what that looks like, right? And I'll, I'll sort of wrap something in here, maybe that, maybe it clarifies, maybe it doesn't. Couple of years ago, we were spending a lot of time talking about blended learning and personalized learning, you know, kind of where are we with that? And is that sort of a piece in terms of how we might then really focus on not only the, you know, the students who are struggling, but maybe the kids who we know we can get to, from level three to level four?
You want to answer a question?
I, I have a few things that we talked about with the, with, as we're looking at our district instructional model, I think a pro is, we're no longer having the same conversations we were about blended learning that we were, so I think that's a.
Because we just call it learning now, right?
Right, absolutely. So I think that's a big win. I know Derry and I were just mentioning that the other day. But I think the other component, a realistic challenge that we are having when it comes to interventions and what's happening is, we talked about tier one instruction is what everyone gets, and tier two, especially at the secondary levels, that's a different concept to talk about. What are you doing within the classroom as you have behaviors and, and you're teaching all the other students to go back and revisit and reteach? So as we think about a district instructional model and what we're asking our teachers to do that, that's a little bit of a mind shift, mindset shift. And additionally, as we look at that bandwidth of, of student data, as a secondary teacher, you're looking at potentially 100, 130, 140 different students. So as we talk about how we're using guided studies in some of those classes to really shift, I think that's a realistic challenge, that leaning into this, to those teachers and seeing how we can better support some of those models or best give them data that analytics can break that up. So I, I still think that's an area we need to continue to, to grow and look at. So, I still think that's an area we need to continue to grow and look at. And our district instructional model should hopefully, I keep saying, provide some stability and structure for what some of that expectations might look like. But the secondary interventions is continuing to be an area that we'll need to look at as we ask the teachers to do a little bit more.
But if you, if you look at, I appreciate that, but if you look at the tiers, I think it's, what, 80% of the students are Tier One? Well, clearly, 80% of the students are not where we want them to be.
Right. And so, I think that's where it goes back to the, when we think about a district instructional model, the few sum all with our CA3T model of that 80%, going back and strengthening that Tier One. So, what are those good instructional practices that all students are getting? And then, we were just talking about, let's say, we have a classroom or a school that might be having some behavioral challenges, so how are we go in and support those teachers so that we can focus on the instructional components instead of just the behavior management? But I don't want to underplay, that's a very valuable comment that you just shared, and I think something that we are looking at, because we haven't always had some fidelity of what those instructional expectations are when we look at Tier One. And I think that's something that we build into that. And then, I appreciate, I know Dr. Lewis's vision of a walkthrough tool can help measure that, in addition to the rigor of the tasks that we're asking students to do and what the teacher's role is. So, I see the comprehensive plan, but it's going to take a little bit to build.
Is that where the principals will kind of then take that shift and say, "Okay, here's some suggestions or ideas on how I can support the teachers"? Because I think oftentimes, a lot of, you give the data to the teachers and they're like, "Okay, so, what are you going to do with this?". And I'm like, "That's extra work on the teachers as well as trying to differentiate". So, I think the whole principal as an instructional leader will help.
Absolutely.
Support that.
I have a question. I think it's not too far afield, I actually think it's related, but I just wanted to make an observation. So, the goal is by, was it 2030?
30.
That we'd get at 75%. And if you, so that's about 12 years, so kind of a K through 12, it's almost the interim. So, how you, your ability to reduce or to increase achievement at the early ages is much higher than it is at the secondary level. So, with curriculum in mind, how do we, I'm sure there are strategies for supporting secondary teachers so that they're able to make advancements in terms of achievement? I mean, I guess what I'm wanting to hear is, it's not too late when a student is in the 10th grade. And we have, even as a district, we have a huge number of students that are not, in whole, that are not getting to that Level Three or Four. So, how do we build that into the curriculum? So, we want to have rigor, but then if they're already below, how does, how do you address this issue as educators?
That's those safety nets that we have to build in at every single grade level. Of course, we're getting back to standards-based instruction in terms of knowing where our students are relative to mastering those standards. And so, I often say, "Hope is not a strategy". And so, we can't continue to just roll out instruction and curriculum in hope that by Tier One instruction that we're meeting all students' needs. Going back to getting where students, where we're having that laser-like focus on students, and you asked, "What does that look like?". So, now we know what standards a student is deficient in. Okay, so now, let's peel that onion back. Why are we deficient in that standard? So, if that standard was, this child was supposed to read a passage and answer some comprehension questions, well, if this student was struggling with fluency, now I need to work on fluency. I don't need to keep putting passages in front of him, let's work on fluency so he can understand the passage in order to answer those questions. So, you're really just kind of peeling back that onion and seeing what that academic interference is, that, the reason that the student can't, or struggling with mastering that standard.
Okay.
So, I have a question about the flip side of that, which is, when you talked about Tier One instruction being for all the students in the classroom, are we also thinking about, what do we do for that handful of students that are in, and particularly, I think, true for elementary school classrooms, where they have already mastered the standard before they receive the Tier One instruction? And so, what do we do with those kids? You know, in thinking about broadening that perspective?
I agree. And we've been having some interesting conversations just at the fifth to sixth grade with some math, for example, and how we get students' services that they need while managing even some of those bigger transition gaps. So, I do think it's providing some good instruction and resources and leadership and direction to our teachers, because it's really easy to say, "The answer's differentiation". And then, we look at everything that we're looking at, and I think that with, typically with some of our needs and some of our data, teachers here, I got to bring my lower students up. So, I think that cumulative, and that's where the district instructional models that we're looking at right now, and we brought in some consultants with some robust evidence-based data, they're talking about how you reach the highs and you reach the lows. And so, I think that that is probably the best answer, but really starting to provide some support to our teachers. And then, as we build curriculum, we're really trying to get into a robust unit design where we are helping coach that. So, it's no longer just an expectation where a teacher may have taken that class, but really respecting the teacher as a designer and then providing them with examples or example units that show them how to reach. So, I would say it's a leadership piece at this point, too, that we can take some ownership.
Is there, is there a piece of that that's flexibility in how, as a district, we let teachers manage that? It's, speaking from some personal experience, there have been some times when I feel like there's been some resistance to let teachers do things a little differently with some of those kids in order to get at, you know, extending them and meeting those needs and, I guess, is that, is that a real barrier, or has it been a barrier?
That's a great question, because I know it's a very natural response as our curriculum or student performance would dip, that we tighten the reins and we keep tightening and tightening. So, with some of the curriculum work that we did, we did build a year-to-glance that gives, at Example Elementary, that gives just units, that we kind of break them up with some standards alignment. But the great key is that we build, we align the standards and prioritize the standards. So, if Example Reading Street falls off, or falls off the face of the earth tomorrow, we have the what, and so, we build from there. But the second piece is, teachers have said, "I want to do project-based learning, I want to delve into different", and that's where you can easily extend. So, with that, we're looking at this district instructional model where you could start to design, and we teach our teachers, those, the recipe components to design and design well and design in teams, or we can give example. So, then we can start to kind of back away from that feeling. But we are pulling away a little bit from that resource, like, the resource is the curriculum, and building the standards are your curriculum. So, but you're right, and that probably could be a teacher feeling out there, that there's a sense of, "I've got to do this", especially at, maybe our elementaries would...
Be more of a parent.
The parents sometimes feel that way, too, so... Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, we can continue to work on that. All right, I know I've taken a lot of time. So, a great segue is to Kevin Harrell to talk about our Students with Disabilities and Student Services supports.
Hello, Kevin Harrell is Director of Director of Student Services, Special Education. And to your comment, an ideal tiered system does look at Tier Two and Tier Three for higher achieving students.
That's helpful, that's helpful to know, because we so often talk about it as...
Just a disability.
Deficit.
Many times, people forget to mention that, but an ideal system looks at all students. Again, Special Education, Special Education is specially-designed instruction for students with disabilities to ensure they have access to the general ed curriculum and making progress. But, and looking at three different areas, and there are several, we're trying to make sure that our parents' rights and students' rights are in place at all times and making sure that happens. And then, the other part of that is that specially-designed instruction, looking at individual students. Now, and those aren't small, but when we started talking about state assessments and what students are doing, that's where the access comes in. And a lot of times, people talk about the access, they talk about what special ed teachers are doing and what special ed teachers and staff do, is look at student individual strengths and needs and focus on that to make sure and make goals and make progress. Now, the other part of Special Education is making sure students have access to general education. And I can tell you, listening to Jennifer and working with Jennifer, it's been a while since our district's had a curriculum person that's focused on curriculum, because that is really talking about, how do we make sure students have access to our general ed teachers and our content specialists? Because that's the information that the state assessments. And making sure that we understand that even if a student doesn't read well, it doesn't mean they can't understand and problem-solve and access that general ed information and understand it and be able to. That's why state assessments allow for reading and different things, so making sure students have those accommodations. And really, working with our TNL Department and Dr. Baslow, to make sure that in our instructional design, district instructional design is universal and looking at making sure all students have access and that, when you start talking about personalized learning and those type of things, that's where we get the biggest impact for students with this exceptionality, is really being exposed to our general ed teachers and our content specialists and with their peers and making sure that they are in the classroom. And we look at data, and the state actually looks at our data, too, to look at how much students are in the classroom. And they're looking, and looking at that Tier One, Tier Two, Tier Three supports so that we know that if that is done early, and their screenings and their interventions put in place early in their education, that K through Three, that long-term, it has a more positive impact than if we're catching them later and we're just remediating and those type of things. So, that differentiated instruction, personalized learning, making sure that as we, our teachers, our content teachers, I mean, our special ed teachers are working with our content teachers and trying to get students in the classroom. And again, we look at, really, in the special ed, what special ed part is looking at, what do students need and breaking down the barriers to do that? And I know, and I'll say that, but I want to make sure that that access part is the big thing that we're working on, and starting last year and this year, and working with the curriculum department. And having Jennifer, we just had a conversation recently about that universal design, and we will, and we know that impact. Specific questions? Open us to questions.
Leah's going to bring us home.
Yes.
Yes. Can you, can, do you have like five more minutes in you? I'm just going to talk to you, as Terry mentioned, about English language learners, learning coaches, and professional learning. So, when we're talking about English language learners and how we're utilizing data, the entire program is data-driven. And I'm going to actually jump down to my fourth bullet. Not this year, but last year, we approved and hired our first, well, not our first, we had one previously just for one year, but an ELL facilitator. And her role and function was driven by data. So, at that time, we had just recently done a study, we had pulled all of our data for our ELLs over time, looked at longitudinal data, I think I said that right, and found that our student, our ELL students who were coming to us in kindergarten were staying at a rate of between 60 and 70% into middle school. So, we felt like our efforts really needed to be focused on, kind of back to what everybody else has been sharing around core instruction for ELLs at elementary. So, our ELL facilitator, Casey Van Dyke, focuses on those four elementary schools in beefing up core content and instruction, pushing in and providing access for those students in their classrooms with their peers. And then, second to that, works with middle and secondary on the very same thing. So, to push us back up, every single English language learner in our district is required by the state of Kansas to have an individual learning plan, very similar to an IEP. It is data-driven, it's data-focused. In that plan, they're developing goals pulled directly from the standards. So, it's using standard language from the ELL standards and where they're performing proficiency-wise, and then also on their state assessments and creating a goal. Then those, then a plan is created, like, here's how we're going to meet that goal, and it's shared with the gen ed teacher along with the ELL resource teacher. So, everybody has those. Elementary especially, they've really, especially this year, done a nice job of incorporating the ELL, the individual learning plans into the data meetings that they're having on a weekly basis around students. So, that's been a win this year. And then, professional learning. So, these are some things that are new, that are new this year. Of course, this isn't. The focus is access to core content. But we have also partnered with K-State, they received an Insight Grant, which allowed them to, which allowed them to come into our district. We have 25 staff members who are receiving their ELL endorsement for free through a coursework model. It has a course and then an implementation.
I said, "I'm glad they're doing that again, I remember..."
Yeah, it's super cool, because part of it is implementation. So, they're coming in, they're observing, and they're coaching through what they learned in the previous semester. So, that's been great. As part of the Insight Grant, we also have professional learning built in, like, all four of those ELL elementary schools are doing two half-days, they're partnering, so that they get, for all their teachers. So, the whole schools are doing that, again, to beef up that access to core. The other thing that we're just starting to explore is getting back into, Kansas has the Co-teaching Kansas Project. And so, at secondary, especially high school, been really trying to focus on having our ELL resource teachers co-teach with content teachers, but that can be challenging, especially at high school, if you're not a content expert, but you are maybe the ELL resource expert. So, wanting to get some support in how to develop those co-teaching relationships so they can be as effective as they can be. There are also, Casey, our ELL facilitator, has been working with those teams to think strategically about placement of ELLs, so we can be really, you know, what core classes are they in, so that we can strategically give support in a push-in way versus having to have them take an elective ELL resource support class, unless that's what the data calls for, like, their proficiency level's really low, they're new to the country, they need that semester kind of thing. And then, standards alignment. So, our ELL facilitator's been working with all of our leadership teams, we have one at every level, and this is an example up here of a six-through-A ESL curriculum design map. So, you can see at the top, like, the standard, what Dr. Baslow was talking about. Below that is the English language proficiency standard that aligns to the content standard for ELA. And then, underneath that, you can see three different categories, receptive, productive, and interactive. So, those are all ways in which a classroom content teacher could meet their content standard along with an ELL standard, through receptive language, through productive language, through interactive language. And then, these can be directly shared with content teachers. So, it's a really great way, once you think about those individual learning plans, you look at the goal, it's standard-aligned, you can pull a curriculum design map that's also standard-aligned and have some sort of tangible things that can be done, which also kind of aligns itself to that personalized learning piece, right? These are the kinds of things that would support this student in engaging in this content area. Questions about ES, or ELL, before I move on from there?
Yeah.
I have a question about the Co-teaching Kansas Project. So, in that model, when you have a partnership, like, for example, I think my daughter is in a class where that's occurring at Lawrence High School, and it's a partnership between the English teacher and ELL instruction, and do they, does that, do they stay within content area, the co-teaching model, or do they move with the, like, a group of kids through the day?
They wouldn't necessarily move with a group of kids during the day. They would focus on core contents, like ELA, science, and mathematics.
Okay.
Possibly social studies, but those are the three we're really focusing on, is ELA, mathematics, and science. But they wouldn't necessarily follow the kids.
Okay.
But that's what I was thinking about strategically placing students. So, if you knew you had, I mean, you don't want to track them and want to be conscientious of that, but if you knew you could have a co-teaching model in the science class and there was these four students that could benefit from it, can we make sure they're in that class, receiving the in-class support through a co-teaching model versus having them in four different science classes and trying to figure out how to have a co-teacher in each one of those?
Okay.
And that's what we're grappling with right now, exactly how that scheduling can happen. Like, we've gotten a little better, but we're not quite there yet.
So, the ELL, just to, I'm sorry to belabor this, but the ELL teacher isn't necessarily co-teaching in multiple content areas?
Not usually, they could be. I'm not going to say that would never happen.
Okay.
But some of our ELL teachers are dual-certified, so if they also have certification in another area, it makes sense for them to co-teach in that area.
Okay.
They're ELA certified, they're mathematics certified, those kinds of things.
Thanks.
Good question.
So, I'm wondering, at the elementary level, if all of our ELL kids are actually getting the optimal ELL instruction? And the reason I ask that is, I've heard anecdotal reports, and so, I have no idea if it's true or not, that there are kids who want to stay in their home school, so if they might be eligible to go to one of the cluster sites, they don't. Is that sort of happening? And if so, is there a way that we can actually nudge them in that direction? And I certainly appreciate wanting to stay in the home... in that direction? And I certainly appreciate wanting to stay in the home school. But, you know, at the end of the day, if you can become proficient by going somewhere else, I think that's a better outcome.
That's a great question. And to answer it, I can also touch on something that I wanted to mention as well. Yes, that is happening. It absolutely, for some of our families, it's important for their children to go to their home school. And we offer the services if they qualify. And if they decline, then they can stay at their home school.
Do we, do we nudge them?
We do. We do a lot of counseling on the front side, especially if it's a student who has low profi, low English proficiency and talk about the benefits. We encourage visits. We have videos of each of our ELL sites that they can watch, so they can see who the principal is and what some of the teachers look like. And, you know, the students, it's just a little welcome video for each of them. So we have a lot of ways to try and encourage families to, to do that. We also, of course, if they qualify, they're receiving trans, free transportation. So all of those things are available to them. But if they are in a school and they are declining services, another thing that Casey does is go out and work with those teachers. We don't, that doesn't preclude us from helping them to meet their needs. But it does sometimes put a classroom teacher at another school or the support staff there in a, in a position where they don't have as many tools at their disposal as they would at one of the four elementaries. And so we're very clear with that, with the parents, as so that they know as they're not accepting services, there won't be as many resources for, specifically for an English language learner in that school. Sometimes it's a student who qualifies, but they have a higher proficiency level. So the, the coaching that we would do of a family would be maybe less in that situation.
Thanks.
Yeah. So just, I'm gonna talk briefly about our learning coach model. You just recently, I think you saw something on our high-impact coaching model. We have some, some coaches that are attending that training. So we are shifting, this is something that's different this year. We've used this model in the past, but we have partnered with Dr. Knight at KU, and we are utilizing the high-impact coaching model, which focuses specifically on improving instructional practice for teachers. Our coaches do work directly with all new teachers, they mentor, and then they work by invitation with other teachers. And so the three main components of the high-impact coaching model are behavior, engagement, and achievement. And the achievement portion is directly tied to our curriculum design work. The other sort of, the big point of the high-impact coaching model is to, for coaches to work with teachers in setting and reaching powerful, and this is the important part, student-centered goals. So they are data-based. But we're not just talking about the data that we looked at earlier, we're talking about a lot of very specific data points. And sometimes the coach has to work with the teacher to help collect some of that data. So it is about data gathering, analyzing that data with the teacher, and then moving through a high-impact coaching model with each teacher that involves looking at those three areas, behavior, engagement, and achievement, setting a powerful student-centered goal, working through a process to meet it through videotaping, videotaping the teacher, allowing them to do self-reflection. And then if that goal is achieved, moving on to another student-centered goal. So to support the coaches, as, right now, they're just learning the model, some of them, some of them have some experience and background. But one thing that we've done, because in the past, our, our learning coaches, they, they're, they're great, right? And they want to know everything, and they want to be able to answer every question for every teacher. And so they have been the jack-of-all-trades. So we thought one way that we could help with that is instead of having them, everybody be experts in every area, we would have some subcommittees. We have a CI3T subcommittee, equity, a curriculum subcommittee, and technology. So as they're out with their teachers, developing these student-centered goals, and they're coming back together as a team, they have these sort of groups. We also have special education representation, so they're a team as well. They have these groups to go draw from. Hey, this is a goal that my teachers, a couple of my teachers are working on. Do you have some advice or support? How can we help them meet it? So they're using that time, that time together. And I'm gonna use the learning coaches to segue into professional learning, which is hugely, we, we have been working for years, I think, to be data-driven in the professional learning that we're offering our teachers. So we have obviously lots of student achievement data to draw from. We, we have been surveying teachers to get a sense of what do they want, and then how do they want to get it? Do they want that face-to-face? Do they, is this, you know, how, what are the different delivery models that work best? And trying to use those to help drive professional learning. So I'm gonna come back to that, want to go down to the third bullet. Another thing I wanted to touch on is, as you all know, we have Avid at our middle and our high school, but we are also utilizing the professional learning through Avid to, to cross all grade bands, K-12. So we continue to offer culturally-relevant teaching, transforming educators, which has been highly successful. We'll have it three times this year. We had it three times last year, getting approximately 50 to 55 participants each time with a goal of having all of our certified staff having gone through that and then, then have a plan in place for maybe some others. They, there's another strand in Avid called critical reading that many of our staff have attended and raved about. It crosses all content areas. So some of our staff have gone, as we take like site teams to, in the summer when we do that. But through some Title IV grant money, we were able to have, we're gonna have Avid come here with their, some of their facilitators for critical reading. And we can offer that to at least 100 participants in June. We're gonna focus that on middle and high school. We're, we're in, in conversations with them about what, what do they want it to look like? Do they want entire teams, like my whole science team to go? Because you might be more inclined to implement some of the strategies that you learn. You know, if your whole team attends, you can do that together. So we're, we're really excited about that opportunity and really harnessing and leveraging our partnership with Avid to build the professional learning that we have. And we continue to infuse through all contents at the middle school and, and high school level. And again, these, both of these are available to our K-5. We've just focused on middle and high. So I'll bump us back up just to one last piece on our professional learning. We've been, the coaches and I have been in some preliminary conversations about how do we, you know, what do we know about professional learning? We know that one day you sit, you get something. In fact, we were just reading something that said, adults shouldn't sit for more than 15 minutes. So I was thinking about y'all.
[laughing]
And that even when you do, even in that 15 minutes that you're sitting and listening, you will only retain 10% of what you heard. So it's a good thing you have a PowerPoint to refer back to for, for our, for your benefit. But, so what do we know about, you know, professional learning? We know that one day, sitting and getting something will not change practice. There's actually no evidence to suggest it will change practice. So as a coaching team, we were trying to think, what does that mean for us? So we're, we are just, and I share this with you lightly, we are piloting just a small thing this year. We're getting ready on October 19th to have an elementary PD day. We, we did choose sessions wisely. We have data sessions, we have behavior sessions, we have a time for curriculum where, as, as Dr. Besslo mentioned, they'll be in grade-level bands. Everybody will be doing trauma-informed care. So all the things that we know, we've sort of built, and there is some choice built in, in the morning. But, but behavior and mental health are things that come up a lot through the conversations that we're having with parents, when we look at our data, when we think about engagement, when we think about equity. So we have one small session with probably 20 to 30 participants that will attend a behavior session. They're gonna create a goal at the end, and then we're gonna share those goals with the building coaches, who, who, wherever those teachers are. And the building coach is gonna support them in implementing the goal. So like with behavior, I learn a couple of strategies, but then, you know, Kevin Harrell walks in and I'm like, see, here he is, and he's still doing that thing, and that strategy didn't work. So maybe having a coach say, hey, I heard, I knew you were in that session, I saw your goal, would you like me to come in and observe? So we're gonna just try it out with this really small group and then think more broadly about what does ongoing job-embedded PD look like? And how can we really be thinking ahead to 19, 20 to plan for those days? And that, my friends, is the end.
Questions?
Oh, except Jerry's gonna talk.
I just wanted to end by backing up to the very beginning. Melissa, when you said staff in the relationship goal, that hadn't included staff in there?
I said.
That caught me off guard because I thought, yes, we did. And Anna brought up the original document that we had, staff is in there. And I'm very sorry to report that it was just inadvertently left out on this document, but I wanted to clear that up because I.
And I was like, did I miss?
Yeah, I was, I was a little caught off guard there. But yes. So I hope this all brought things together a little bit. You can see how we're working within the KISA framework and focusing on assessments and results in many, many different areas, not totally just academics. Thank you for listening longer than 15 minutes.
Kelly.
So Leah.
I have a question. You walked away.
Yeah.
I'm doing my, I, my expertise is in dementia, and when you were talking about memory, I was like, I'm sorry, write everything down. So I just wanted to ask a quick question, just a follow-up question to the, I'm really excited to hear this goal setting. I've used it in different settings, it's been really effective. So when you said you were gonna evaluate it, you will, the 20 participants that you'll be collecting feedback from the teachers, obviously.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to ask.
And they may not all want to participate in such a, but, but assuming that those that want to move forward, we're definitely, definitely gonna get their feedback.
It sounds really exciting. So I'm glad you're doing that. Thank you.
And I think the feedback has to be based around, not just did you like it or did you not like it, but like, how did this work?
How did it work?
And what could we do differently? Because I think it's kind of a no-brainer that it should be there. There should be support in place, but what should it look like and what feels good to different people?
Okay. Thanks for coming back up. Appreciate it. And then Dr. Lewis.
Yes.
I know we're all ready to go. So I was wondering, as we look at the broader conversation, just going back to the data that we were looking at initially, that took us down this path to look at what are we doing to help make some improvements within the district? And all of it's really quite exciting. But I was wondering how, as you are making these changes as we go through the year, how are you incorporating those into your strategic plan at the same time for the, for the, you know, the next five years coming up? If there's, do you have a strategy as you're looking at all these different things that are happening right now, how you'll build on them within the strategic plan?
Well, this is something that we couldn't wait until we're finished with my first 100 days and then develop a strategic plan. I always say our kids can't wait. And so these are things that we will continue to build upon, and it'll just become the way we do business. Of course, we'll evaluate how we're doing on some of these things, but we'll just continue down that path. And we'll continue to, to focus on our goals. And, and, and what, what we know is that every student should have a thinking curriculum. And I hope you've seen that tonight as, as evidence of the work that we're doing for our, with our curriculum in ensuring that all of our students have what they need to be successful. So that will just become the way we do business, but it'll also be ingrained in our, our strategic plan. And so I always talk about an aligned system. Everything has to be aligned. And, and students benefit, districts benefit from, and we know the best results come from aligned system, where the, the, the standards are aligned, the assessments are aligned, our instruction are aligned.
Right.
And nothing will come in the way that would distract us from, from that aligned system.
Yes. I take this strategic plan very seriously.
Yes.
It's like a roadmap for Lawrence to achieve.
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly.
Any more questions?
I just want to thank our team for putting this, putting this together. As we were brainstorming and they were just, this is what we're already doing. I said, well, just put it in there. This is not something that we dream of doing. This is the work that we're, we're doing. And as I say, the, hope it's not a strategy. We're, we're intentional about the work that, that we're doing. But at the same time, we want to make sure that we have, we're providing our students that those supports that, that may interfere from instruction, whether it's social, emotional support. But also making sure that our teachers, we're bringing our teachers along, along the way and make, and empowering our teachers to, to lead some of this work. We were having, I was having a conversation with Laura Folsom back there who's talking while I'm talking.
[laughing]
About, it's this conference about teacher-powered, teacher-powered schools. And so how we can empower our teachers to, to take ownership of this and, and, and run with it. Because they are the experts on, on our students, and they know, know our students best. So we just give them the what and the how comes from the relationships that they've built with them so they can make their content relevant to our students. You can continue now, Lori.
I just want to say thank you, and don't feel bad about going long tonight. This was really, really substantive and very much appreciated.
Lori.
What questions, comments, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.